Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you and welcome to the May 16th, 2017 Post Falls City Council meeting. Clerk will note that all council members are present with the exception of Councilman Borders who is excused. I will mention there is a public hearing tonight, if anyone wishes to testify, there are forms on the table in the back, please complete a form and turn it into our city clerk. Tonight, we have a couple announcements. This week is National Police Week. In 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week in which May 15th falls is National Police Week. Established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. The city council will be holding a workshop on Monday, May 22nd at 5:15 in the Police Department's Community Room. The topic of the workshop is Land Use Development Codes. The public is welcome to attend. The workshop will last about two hours. Post Falls City Hall and City Business Offices will be closed Monday, May 29th in observance of Memorial Day. There will be a Memorial Day celebration at Evergreen Cemetery on Monday, May 29th at 10:00 a.m. to honor our nation's fallen servicemen and women and all those who serve and have served this country in the military. American Legion Post 143 invites and encourages the public to attend. A potluck lunch, open to the public, will be served at Post 143 following the ceremony. The Post Falls Park and Recreation Department has partnered with River City Leadership Academy Class of 2017 to host a scavenger hunt, exploring Carmelum Park and the surrounding Upper Falls Community Forest. The scavenger hunt is Saturday, June 3rd from 10:00 to 12:00 p.m. There will be prizes, raffles, and treats. All proceeds will go to New Beginnings and Northwest Sids Foundation, and you can register online at www.postfallschamber.com. And lastly, I want to share a sneak preview of a press release that should be issued tomorrow by the city, the Corolline Economic Development Corp. and the Post Falls Chamber of Commerce. This week, the Trade and Industry Development 12th Annual Corporate Investment and Community Impact CC Awards were announced, and the Post Falls Orgill Project was one of 15 to receive the Community Impact Award nationally. The Community Impact category celebrates projects that are making their communities a better place, from revitalizing the local environment to providing much-needed jobs. These companies are beacons of light. Orgill's decision to expand its distribution facilities in Post Falls is a great example of collaboration between the city, Jobs Plus, the county, the Department of Commerce, and the decisive leadership at Orgill that took a chance in its location decision. And, you know, we've talked about this several times, but to find a single user for a building the size of the vacant Kimbo Building, which is approximately 465,000 square feet, was a tremendous win for the city. Orgill is the world's largest independent hardware distributor. They're about 100 and, as I recall, 170 years old, family-owned. With private investment of 15 million, the approximately half-million-square-foot distribution center will create more than 135 new jobs. And Orgill's decision to move here will result in an anticipated $5.8 million yearly in wages coming into the community. So congratulations again to Orgill, and it was nice for that project to receive an award from the Trade and Industry Development. And you heard it here first because it doesn't come out until tomorrow. I do have a special presentation that might be a surprise. We have someone that started working for the city of Post Falls, it must have been at about the tender age of eight. It says, "Congratulations on reaching an anniversary milestone with the city of Post Falls. Through the years, your talents and efforts have been essential to our success. Together, we can take pride in your accomplishment." Excuse me. "Our professionalism reflects your own skill and expertise. The quality of our reputation is grounded in your knowledge, creativity, and innovative spirit. We value your commitment to excellence. So please accept our gratitude for your dedication to the city of Post Falls. We hope your award will always remind you of our appreciation," and that goes to our city administrator, Shelley Underwood. So Shelley, thank you very much. We do have a certificate of appreciation and a little gift for you, so it's, as mayor and council, it makes our job much easier to have a staff that works so well, and a lot of that is due to the leadership of Shelley, so again, please accept our congratulations.
Thank you.
And she actually was a little older than five or eight when she started. But we're not going into that.
No.
Next up, we have an overview of the State Highway 41 Widening Project. Lee Bernardi, Auto Transportation Department, presenting.
Yeah, I was asked to come here tonight to kind of give an overview of the Highway 41 Corridor Project and where we're at. It goes kind of along with the mayor's Oroville announcement. There's a lot of population and business and development going on here in this town, and population, the census that have been out, the last couple of census has shown tremendous growth in this area, and we're seeing a lot of increased volume along 41 as a result. What we're doing, I'm not sure if everyone's familiar with what's going on, but we're going to take the existing four lanes at Mullen Avenue and carry that four-lane highway all the way up to Boca Road, up to Rathdrum, through the Rathdrum Prairie. We've got every half a mile, we're going to put in a intersection will allow left turns onto and off of the highway. Those half-mile intersections are at Mullen Avenue, 16th, Pole Line, oh shoot. Prairie. Well, Prairie, before that.
Hope Avenue.
Hope Avenue, that's right, that one escaped me, sorry about that, but Hope Prairie. And then north of Prairie Avenue, we're going to have intersections every mile that will accommodate U-turning traffic, but in between those intersections, we're only going to allow left turns on and off of the highway. We're going to include a 12-foot-wide multi-use path along the east side, which will accommodate bicycles and pedestrians. That's going to go the full length. Actually, we have a public meeting coming up Thursday between 4:00 and 7:00 at the Post Falls Police Department, and we'd be glad to have, you know, all comers and welcome comments. We've got some visual aids we'll have there to show everybody. We're looking at different options for getting traffic turned around for U-turn-type traffic. We're looking at mid-block U-turns, we're looking at widened intersections, and we're also looking at potential roundabouts. So that's kind of it, we're in the very preliminary stages at this point. Right now, we've got surveyors out there marking right-of-way, and so we can determine how much right-of-way we're going to have to acquire to get this project done. But anyway, if anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to entertain those.
What is your anticipated start date?
The actual construction is set for 2020. So we, yeah, it's a little ways out, but we've got, this year, we're going to design, we figure it's going to take a full year of right-of-way acquisition, and that leaves us a year to get any utilities moved that may have to move before the construction starts the following year.
Very much.
Is there another question?
Is there a signal proposed that's happening?
There is not a signal proposed, in fact, 12th Avenue will be a right turn only onto and off of 41.
Question concerning 16th and the addition to Goodwill, I thought they were supposed to say right here because they put in Goodwill.
Well, the light will go in as part of this project, but that won't be until 2020.
We have to be a little careful because it's not a public hearing, so are you going to be around for a while if folks have questions?
I can be, sure.
Okay, or folks can show up at your meeting on Thursday?
I think that would be the best solution. Well, there will be several of us there that we can answer any questions, and we'll have comment forms so that, you know, not only can you give us your input on which design type that you like best, why and why not, but things like lights at 16th, so.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. If anyone has questions, Thursday, you get an opportunity and hopefully get some of those questions answered.
Yep, 4:00 to 7:00 at the Post Falls Police Department.
I do have a question, just one. Since you said that it's just in the development stages, if someone does come there and make a comment, is the state open to changes of the plan?
Absolutely. I mean, that's what this public meeting's all about. We want input from the community, and we want to, you know, our goal, number one, is safety, you know, number two is mobility, we want traffic flow, three is economic opportunity, and we want everybody happy, you know, as we want to accommodate everybody as much as we can, so, you know, the people that come to this meeting, the people that are going to be using this facility, and so that's our goal.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you. So you'll actually start construction in 2020?
That's right, yes.
And that construction is expected to last how long?
We're, this is going to be a two-year project. So the first phase, you know, we're not that far along, but the first phase will be to build either the northbound or the southbound. Second phase, we'll do the other half.
Good, thank you very much, it's nice to know that something that is being looked at, you know, we all wish it was this year.
Yeah.
We appreciate what you do.
Well, it's in the works.
Thank you very much.
At least it's started, all right, thank you.
We appreciate it. We do have a proclamation tonight. Infrastructure Week 2017. Whereas the week of May 15th through May 19th, 2017, is being observed nationally as Infrastructure Week, whereas the city of Post Falls relies on critical infrastructure, including our roads, water, reclamation facilities, and water systems. Whereas city roads promote the safety of the public by providing access for citizens, police, and emergency vehicles. Whereas the water reclamation facility cleans the wastewater from our homes and businesses. Whereas the water system provides fresh drinking water to all who reside in or visit our city. Whereas all public infrastructure is the backbone of our economy and supports future economic development and creation. And whereas Infrastructure Week 2017 has been established to highlight the importance of infrastructure in communities throughout the country and to recognize and encourage leadership at the federal, state, and local levels to support our nation's pressing infrastructure challenges. Now therefore, I, Ronald G. Jacobson, Mayor of the City of Post Falls, Idaho, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th, 2017, as Infrastructure Week, and urge the people of Post Falls to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing this And it's my understanding we do need an amendment to the agenda tonight for a public, for a executive session?
That is correct.
And it deals with?
It's Idaho Code 74-206-1C to acquire an interest in real property which is not owned by a public agency.
The basis for the amendment is that the property in question didn't come on the market until after the agenda was posted.
I would move to amend the agenda to include an executive station pursuant to Idaho Code 74-206-1C to acquire an interest in real property which is not owned by a public agency.
Motion second for the discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhun?
Aye.
Motion passes. Are there any amendments other than that to the agenda?
There are none.
Would you like to present the consent, or declarations of conflict? Seeing none, would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from May 2nd, 2017, city council meeting. Item B is payables, April 25th through May 8th, 2017. Item C is memorandum of understanding with the Post Falls Urban Rental Agency for assistance with the parking lot on 4th Avenue. Item D is construction improvement agreement for the cottages at Tullamore. Item E is construction improvement agreement for Point at Post Falls First Edition. Item F is escrow agreement for Point at Post Falls First Edition. Item G is plat for Point at Post Falls First Edition. Item H is plat for motor vehicles addition. Item I is frontage improvement waiver request for 206 East 10th Avenue. Item J is plat for Dolores Edition. Item K is findings of fact and conclusions for Kern Zone Change File Number ZC-17-01. Item L is findings of fact and conclusions for Chase and Grange Annexation File Number Item M is the cash and investment balances report for the month of March. And item N is additional services agreement with JUB Engineers to evaluate river crossing options. Item O is master development agreement for Columbia Estates Subdivision File Number S-17-01. Item P is declaration of intent to exchange real property owned by the city at 214 East Railroad Avenue for real property owned by Cootney County located at the intersection of Railroad Avenue and Spokane Street.
Any questions? Seeing none, let's entertain a motion.
Move to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion second for the discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhun?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, public hearings, and tonight we do have one public hearing, CLA CDA Investment Annexation, File Number A1702. Mr. Manley, Planning Manager, will be presenting, and I will open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Wilhun, and members of the city council. So yes, the CLA CDA Annexation, the applicant is CLA CDA Investment, and the applicant rep is Sandy Young from Veridus, and the applicant's rep is present this evening. The requested action is to review the annexation request, determine that the requested zoning conforms to the Post Falls Conference of Plan, and to potentially approve the proposed medium-density multifamily residential R2 zoning with the requested annexation. At the April 11th public hearing, this was forwarded to you guys with out a recommendation, therefore there was a recommendation of not a no, not a yes, it's more or less a neutral at this point in time. So the burden will be on you to apply whatever zoning, if at all, as part of approval with this, if it so chose to be approved. The project location, as you see here in the red hashed box right here, it's about 10 acres, east of Highway 41, north of 12th Avenue, it's just northeast of a Crimson King subdivision. Looking at the surrounding zoning in the area, I chose to zoom out a little bit more than what you saw in your staff report, to kind of just kind of look at how the Highway 41 corridor is kind of zoned, how it relates to the Highway 41 interchange. You do see, right at this location, that's Highway 41, you see commercial going up Highway 41 corridor. What you see here is some brown, that's R2 zoning, and there are some similarities, if you look, if you were to fold a piece of paper in half and put ink on it and fold it and unfold it, you'd see kind of like, there's different patterns we played with as kids. It's kind of similar, you see this, it's kind of looking the same a little bit on the west as it is on the east, so it doesn't seem unusual that you would see an R2 request, not unlike what you've seen on the west side of Highway 41. And looking at the future land use map, you see, once again, the commercial going up Highway 41, and then you see this yellow at this location, just east and west of Highway 41, the lighter yellow, the residential designation, so it would be consistent with how it's currently designated as a residential use and per the comp plan map. As stated in the intro, the project is approximately 10 acres. The current land use of this site is vacant, the proposed zoning, the R2, medium-density multifamily. Surrounding land uses to the north and west, to the direct west and north is the, our Cootney County Mobile Home Parks. To the south and east, our property is located in unincorporated Cootney County. Water for this area would be provided by Ross Point Water, with sewer being City of Post Falls. This area is in our area-city impact. It's contiguous with city limits on a southwest boundary point. The proposed medium-density multifamily is adjacent to a variety of zones and various land uses. The proposed use is also consistent with policies found in the annexation, elements within the Conference of Plan, as well as the future land use map, as stated earlier. I'm not going to go over every annexation policy point, as was in the staff report, but I'm going to hit a couple of probably the primary ones that are pertinent. "Is land to be annexed should enable completion or continuation of a pedestrian network that connects neighborhoods to amenities and activity centers throughout the community." So what I have here, in kind of this dashed box, that's the proposed site location. What you see in green, it's the extension of sanitary sewer services that would be included with the 12th Avenue. What you see in red, that would be, on the north side, would be a pedestrian connection along the north, so you would be able to connect by crossing 12th. It's not a direct connection, so it's not ideal, but at least extends that pedestrian network, so then the yellow would then connect further to the west to Highway 41. Over on to the right side of this slide, you see these other boxes highlighted, what you have here, these are commercial slash residential development areas, be probably more likely multifamily or residential. So this corridor connection you're seeing, where I have the cursor on the screen, is from Highway 41 moving from the west to the east to the highlighted proposed annexation R2 at that location. And looking at the fourth policy, "Timing of annexation should be coordinated with opportunities for orderly development of public systems, both policies addressed by the Conference of Plan and the recommendations found in master plans for the water, sewer, transportation parks, and emergency services." So the extension of 12th Avenue would complement these other master plans, it'd be consistent, I should state that. I received a question prior to the public hearing, is, there's been a lot of multifamily, you see it constructed in the west part of town, up Highway 41, in various places, so what's, what total do we have? So over in west Post Falls, you see out off the Beck Interchange, the apartment complex that just went in, it's about, for about 75 units, that's been constructed and leased up, so that's occupied. You have the River City Villas, currently at this location, for those 32 units, they're signing contracts, and he's actually putting them in hotels prior to occupancy, because as fast as, you can't build them as fast as you can get lease agreements. And looking more up Highway 41, what's currently out there, you have the Philstone Apartments, 208 units at this location. This was planned for a slower development plan. They pulled their last permit recently, so as fast as this is going up, they're getting leases up prior to COs of this site. It's not fully developed, so I can't say that all 102, 108 are occupied. Tullamore Place, this is up in Tullamore on the northeast corner of Killdeer and Charville, 120 units are planned to be developed. I haven't been in communication of any leases being signed at this point in time, so I would believe that those 120 currently are, would be vacant. The Villas Apartments, this is on the northwest corner of Pole Line in Charville, 85 units. From what I hear is similar, that as fast as those are getting built, they're getting occupied, there's not a lot of vacancies sitting, they're market-rate apartments at that location. The Els yellow apartments, this is what you see just on the east side of Goodwill. I don't know currently, I haven't heard any reports on how that's leasing up, what the vacancy rate is on that or anything. I do know that, looking at the recent Cootney County Market Forum, I believe Post Falls had a half a percent of vacancy rate for multifamily. Also, when it comes to single-family, I heard, and this is just from discussing over the front counter and whatnot over in the planning division, that single-family homes is a nine-month waitlist for houses. Maybe Council President Wilhun could have a better idea of what she's heard, but that's from what I hear, is they're signing contracts about nine months out and before they can even start a house. So housing in Post Falls, the way I kind of see it at this point, there's kind of a, kind of a bottleneck kind of going on. The demand's higher than what the supply can provide, and this is our workforce housing, and it comes in a bunch of different forms, between large estate lots to single-family homes to multifamily, and from what I hear is there's a shortage in all sectors. So at some point, I guess, the market will resolve it in one way or the other. In regards to transportation, looking at this site, as stated earlier, the 12th would be extended. There's also going to be, would be a requirement with this proposal along the western edge to, what you see in gray, that's the east quarter-mile baggage road. The baggage roads is there to help complement the Highway 41 corridor and the functionality of it. As you saw within the, this evening, discussing about on the half-mile increments between Mullen and 16th and Pole Line and Hope and Prairie, there's going to be limitations on turning movements, so the baggage roads is to help mitigate some of that and gain access to commercial development up Highway 41. Looking at this site more specifically, no matter what got developed there, because in R2, it permits single-family, it's duplexes, apartments, there's a variety of uses that can be permitted with that, depending on the market. As you see on the west side, as referred to in the intro, most of these went single-family home within the R2 zone, but apartments could go here in, at this location. So depending on the traffic, more than likely, because you can't take a left on 12th, more than likely, they would go down to October Glory and then go to a controlled intersection, until such time another route would be provided. So, and speaking with the engineering division, the October Glory, it was constructed to support either scenario, whether it would be a single-family home or a multifamily As stated, the water would be provided by Ross Point Water, and in looking at the sanitary sewer, the city has available facilities and capacity to provide service to the proposed annexation, but they're also at about, there's a 12th Avenue lift station to where the whole basin, I'll go to, north. As this gets developed, the plan is there'd be a Meyer line, and it would flow to a lift station. So the development east of Highway 41, they pay approximately a $3,900 surcharge per residential, single-family residential unit to help offset the cost of this lift station. So as traditionally, growth pays for growth, so that's their proportionate share of their impact on that lift station. It gets adjusted annually per the E and R index. The Meyer line, that's what I have highlighted in red here, so when and if, or whatever, this develops at whatever zone, there'd be the offsetting cost of that line, sort of sizing and depth, would, the applicant would be eligible to get some reimbursement for that. Cootney County Fire and Rescue, they reviewed this proposal, they don't have any issues with the proposed zoning or- They don't have any issues with the proposed zoning or project there for, but, so that kind of concludes the staff report on this. Do you have questions for me at this point?
Questions, John, at this point?
Yes, everyone. John, on the, it was my understanding that in our annexation guidelines, before we annexed a piece of property, it needed to be adjacent to the city, city limits versus corner to corner. Are we making a, are we fudging that a little bit here?
Um, I don't.
Or is that not a guideline?
I spoke to actually Warren about that.
So, excuse me, Idaho code requires that the, in order to annex property, it has to be adjacent or contiguous. What that means, it has to touch at least one point.
Okay.
So this would qualify for annexation under the statute.
Okay.
Questions, John? Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Applicant wishing to speak? Name for the record, please, and shall we start the timer?
Thank you, Mayor, Chairman, Council, Sandy Young, 601 East Front Avenue, Coeur d'Alene. And I am here tonight, obviously asking, requesting annexation of this 10-acre piece of property, representing Chuck and Lynn Anderson. And Chuck and Lynn Anderson were here in 2014, requesting annexation of this same piece, but under an R3 zoning, and it was the recommendation of the council that they come back and ask for a lower density, and so here we are tonight. I was not a part of that at that time, but, so this is a fresh project for us. As John mentioned, the city's comprehensive plan analysis has been done on this request and found that this proposal is in conformance with the city's comp plan. The R2 zoning gives an option for a variety of uses or housing types, as you know, and not telling you anything different, just like getting it on the record. And I think that at the Planning Commission hearing, I think a lot of public testimony missed the fact that this, this is nothing but annexation, so we're not asking for any kind of housing types, we're not even asking that any proposal or development be approved. We're simply asking that county property now be placed within the city because it meets the city's comp plans, long-range goal, zoning ordinance, land use code. And then the option becomes someone coming forward with a development on this property, and then you and Planning Commission have another bite at the apple on it. So as far as pedestrian connectivity, transportation, we heard from ITD that there are going to be changes made. The baggage road certainly is an advantage to this property, and I'm curious tonight as to how the neighbors feel. There's a bigger group here tonight than we had last time. I appreciated Rob Paulus speaking at the Planning Commission hearing and giving information about proposed transportation changes in that corridor. I think most of the testimony you'll hear tonight will center around the traffic issues on Highway 41. So again, annexation only tonight, and I'd like to come back up, of course, and rebut any testimony that's, would be appropriate to rebut.
Any questions for Ms. John?
Sandy, on our agenda report, it does state that the requested action is for annexation and a recommendation for proposed medium-density multifamily R2 zoning.
Right, which doesn't necessarily mean that multifamily housing will be constructed there, because single-family housing, of course, is allowed in R2. Warren can speak to this, but I believe that, it's always been my understanding, when you come forward with a request for annexation, you always come forward with a request for zoning there. This, and just let me add this, Warren, real quick, and then I want to turn it to you. In order to, if we were to come forward with R1 zoning, which of course also allows for a variety of housing types, because of the dedication of right-of-way and the connectivity to sewer, from a financial standpoint, the development is almost impossible under R1 if anybody's going to make any money and not lose money on it. So R2 is the minimum that they can go. And perhaps you hear a request in a year or two or six months, once this, this property is anticipated to be sold by the current owners, and perhaps you hear a request, and it's for high-density apartments, then of course, again, you always have that opportunity to turn that down and ask for a lower density within R2.
Councilor Wilhelm, you're, you're correct. The application tonight is to consider annexation, which is the question of whether or not the city should bring the property into the city. And if the council decides to annex the property, the second question is what's the appropriate zone to assign to that property upon annexation? That's the zoning piece. What it doesn't do tonight is approve development. That would come in the future via a subdivision or building permits, whatever the case may be, depending on what the project was ultimately designed to be at that location. So tonight is zoning and annexation.
Dylan? Linda?
Is that her?
Yeah.
If I may burn up a bit of your time for a question for council. If it is passed as a R2 zoning, then as far as I understand it, if somebody comes to development that meets all the requirements for an R2 zone, then we can't turn it down, correct?
Generically, so if, if it's approved at R2 zoning, any project would have to comply with the requirements for R2. So if it's a subdivision that's required, what we would, we would judge that against, the yardstick would be the, the R2 zoning standard. So if it meets that requirement, the requirements of the R2 zone, then unless there's something that comes up in the process, they'd be entitled to an approval at that point.
Correct, so it's not like if somebody came back with medium-density apartments for the whole thing, we can't say, no, 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 you can't do that because it meets the R2 requirements.
But being allowed use.
Right. Thank you.
And can I then ask a question of Warren as well, as well as the council? So then, when that subdivision comes before a hearing body in the city, if the traffic improvements don't, don't support that type of development, is that a reason for denial or tabling or?
Certainly, any, any proposal that comes forward before the city has to be evaluated against the city's approval criteria. So to the extent that we measure traffic impacts from a development, which is one of the approval criterias for subdivisions, if, depending on the testimony that comes in at that hearing, you can make a decision, is there going to be a traffic impact or not? So that's, it's kind of hard to judge now what might happen down the road, but that would be one of the approval criteria.
So if it's approved for annexation with an R2 zoning, and as Mr. Malloy says, project comes forth and meets all the requirements for that code, or of that zoning requirement, but there's an issue with the traffic component, either P and Z or the city council can turn that down?
Yes. So your options, if, if there's one of the approval criteria is not met, you have a couple options. One is to deny it outright, the other is to try to find a condition that you can have a conditional approval. In other words, requiring that they do something to fix that problem.
Can I follow up with that? Then, Warren, would it be the city engineer that says that the traffic, it's too big of an impact on the traffic? Who would it be that makes that decision?
Ultimately, it'd be the decision maker. So if it's a, we're going to assume that it's a subdivision, it comes before the Planning Commission at that point, they take public comment, just like we're doing tonight, and based on that comment, they make a determination whether or not those approval criteria are met. They would certainly hear from the city engineer, who would provide them input as to what, what they think, in their professional opinion, the impact is likely to be, but that's one voice among all of the voices that they would hear at that hearing. The decision maker gets to weigh all of that and make a decision based on who they think has the most expertise, who has the best information, all of the things that you weigh when you're trying to decide, who do you think has the right of it?
I have one more question. I'm sorry, am I taking up Sandy's time? I'm sorry.
It's okay, because I'm finished with my presentation, so it works.
Okay, well, my question then is, is there, is there a legal way for us to wait until the state approves their Highway 41 plan after their workshop and their public hearing? Is there a legal way for us to table this until we have something? Because that looks to me like is going to be the biggest impact, is that 12th and 41, that traffic out there, to get onto Highway 41 at 4:30 or 5 o'clock from any one of the...
It's an issue.
It's an issue. I was just there, and I've been, I know maybe we're not supposed to be driving around, but, you know, that's what I do for a living, so.
Couple thoughts. One is, it's probably premature to make those type of decisions, because there's a whole number of folks that have signed up to testify that would like to have their voice heard. Secondly, annexation is, is one of the things that the city council does that they have the most leeway on. It's a legislative decision, whether or not to bring a property into the city or not, that's a decision that's within your discretion. Once you make that call, then you decide, like quasi judicial basis, whether, what the zoning should be. So if you don't feel this is an appropriate time to annex a piece of property, that's a legitimate decision to make. There's not really a way to table it, because we're looking a couple, three years down the road at this point, so it would be easier just if, after hearing all of the testimony, if you decide that annexation is, isn't timely at this point, that would be one option.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I think that you answered this, but clarify it for me. You can't annex it without assigning a zone.
You're correct. We need to assign a zone once it comes into the city.
Okay.
Sandy, we'll give you a rebuttal time.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I will comment that, just so everyone knows, we did receive all the written testimony that was submitted to P and Z, and I had to go back, because one couple sent three letters, so I just want you to know I did read them. But we do have that, and that is part of the record, just so you know. So I wanted to make sure you were aware of that. Wishing to speak, all these are in opposition, Lee Wallace. Lee, please come forward and give your name for the record, and we'll give you four minutes of time.
My name is Lee Wallace, and my husband and I live at 1098 North Maverick Lane. We are the owners of 14 acres that are directly to the south border of the petitioner's property, designated by the American Tree Farm System as a family farm called Hidden Pines Tree Farm. I've got a short statement to read, so. Good evening, council members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I've come here tonight to express not only our concern, but concern shared by a large contingent of our friends and neighbors who stand to be impacted by the annexation and subsequent development of the 9.7 acre parcel discussed tonight. You have seen and heard many of us express our strongly-held opinions that this is not the time to annex and zone that parcel as R2 multifamily residence. Part of, we, I have to admit that there is a, a long legacy and an emotional attachment to a lot of this property. My family goes back to ownership of the property we live on since 1927, I think it was. So there is, there is a lot of history there, but that is not the main reason that we are in opposition to this annexation. As was discussed earlier, it is under statute legal for you to annex this piece of property, which is joined to the city only on the corner. However, in past years, it has been council policy, not statute, but policy not to annex pieces of property that would make a checkerboard or a hanging-out dogleg annexation to the city. That's just a side note. I get that urban sprawl and expansion of the city limits is inevitable as growth continues to be a part of the future of Post Falls. However, we feel that uncontrolled growth and poorly-planned growth is not a benefit to anyone except the developers who swoop in, build housing units, absorb the profits, and leave the ensuing hardships for others to live with. There are hundreds of families who depend on smooth and efficient traffic patterns to go about their daily business, to work, to school, to shopping, and to other activities. And I was really startled to hear that there are almost, or more than 500 multifamily units already in process, soon to be leased and filled by families, adding approximately seven to 750 more cars to the Highway 41 corridor, the intersections of Interstate 90 and 41, and Mullen and 41, Pole Line and 41. Responsible planning includes adequate traffic mitigation and consideration of the burden to be placed on residents in simply getting them to a point A, from point A to point B in a safe and timely manner. Has adequate study been done concerning the already-burdened traffic corridors that include Highway 41 and the lower intersections towards I-90? Have you seen analysis of the projected impact from multifamily construction already underway? From Fieldstone, Tullemore, the new elementary school, Foxtail, and the others that were mentioned tonight, what about the multifamily construction behind Goodwill and the others along 16th Street? Has the traffic and planning department adequately presented analysis from any predictive algorithms or actuarial data predicting the impact of the traffic from these buildings? Please consider delay of yet another multifamily opportunity, at least until it can be shown that the impact on residents will be negligible.
Your time is up, so please wrap it up.
Okay, the Highway 41 Improvement Project will not be complete for at least another two to three years. Sounds like it's going to be even longer than that. How much do you expect us to put up with in the meantime? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, wishing to testify, Bob Foster. And just so everyone knows, and I think you've done it before, but there is a clock here, so just keep your eye on that if you can, the timer here.
Oh, there it is, okay.
It doesn't beep.
I'll try to make it really quick. You know, this is really a hard decision, you know, knowing right now that we have some, some opportunity for change, but, you know, I'm still opposed to it.
Excuse me, name for the record.
Oh, Bob Foster, I'm sorry. I'm Bob Foster, I'm the president of the homeowners association of Crimson King Estates. Entrance to our residence is through October Glory, which we think is maybe could cause a serious problem for us down the road. But, you know, I appreciate the fact that everything that's been presented is conforming to the construction and consistent with the other stuff that's going on, but I, I really, in my gut, don't think it's a good program. Because I live there now, and I know what the traffic is like without this new annexation. The annexation kind of scares me because it's my understanding that they can, there's 10 acres and they can put 18 units on each acre, so that's 180 units, which could equate to over 500 people and additional 300 to 350 cars trying to get out of there. And the problem is, is everybody's going to need to get to the light at Mullen and Highway 41. You can't get out on 12th. 16th is going to be impossible to get out, and it's, it's just going to be a real terrible thing, I think. If you take a look at what else is in, in the surrounding areas, you know, we've got, besides that 10 acres, we have 120, well, we saw up here, but I'm talking about on the east side of Highway 41, there's 127 mobile homes. There's 35 homes in our complex, plus there's 252 homes up in the Highlands area, which all of these people and all of us have to reach and get to that corner of the light at Highway 41 and Mullen. So it's really unfair to try to make a decision until some research has been done and to find out what the impact of the traffic is going to be, if indeed they put in something, a multifamily unit that big. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next up, Ann Eisenberg. Oh, I'm sorry, she is, I tried to put you on the spot, didn't I? Ann, let me put my glasses on, and I can read it. Not wishing to speak, and she is against the development. Well said. I gotta read this. Does wish to speak, in opposition, Ann Hayes.
My name is Ann Hayes.
My name is Ann Hayes. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. We live at 1117 North Maverick Lane with our children. It's the five acre property directly adjacent to the property in question. It was mentioned that the proposed zoning is compatible with the city's long-term comprehensive plan, but be that as it may, it is completely inconsistent with the realities that exist on the ground now and into the foreseeable future. Development of the proposed zoning is not only incompatible with existing uses, but it will have an extreme adverse impact on the area in the form of congestion, noise, traffic, and safety, as mentioned by others. As was noted, the only access out of it now is by October Glory Street, Mullen Avenue, and we all face that traffic light at Highway 41. The proposed density, yes, it may not fix it at the highest rate, but we're talking about the max and that's what we have to look at. As the... And in fact, the representative there pointed out that it wouldn't be profitable to develop it at a lower density. That would put many more cars, as was mentioned, on that road. Already, we are waiting through two traffic signal lights when there are only six or seven cars trying to get out of Mullen Avenue because the traffic priority goes to Highway 41 for obvious reasons. And as more and more drivers, because of all the new residents on 41 corridor, that priority is going to have to remain. The changes to Highway 41 will not improve the situation for access because in fact it will further limit the accessibility between Highway 41 and 12th. There will no longer be left turns allowed off of 12th Street or left turns off of 41 onto 12th. The land on October Glory Street and Mullen Avenue on either side is fully built out. That street cannot be expanded to handle more traffic. And as this city council is already aware, there are problems of congestion caused by the current configuration of Highway 41 and Interstate 90 interchange. We already have cars backed up on the shoulder of I-90 that are exiting I-90 to get onto 41. We have blocked intersections that I have encountered at 41 from people entering and exiting Interstate 90, and there are other safety hazards. These problems are increasing daily as all those developments that were mentioned, people are moving in. We have already, I have seen in the afternoon at that Mullen light on 41, traffic backed up all the way to Pole Line Avenue. Unless these traffic problems are addressed and alleviated, I think it would be premature to approve the annexation and zoning of the property here. I would like to make a couple more brief points. The representative indicated that the property is intended to be sold. It was purchased in 2009, seven years ago, for under $250,000. It has been on the market repeatedly. There's a for sale sign on the property now. There has been listed for as high as $799,000. It is listed as development property. I believe that the purpose of this process that we're going through right here should be to talk about development. I don't think that the purpose of this hearing and all that work that we have done should be for the purpose of increase, getting a better zoning so that this person can sell it at a better price. Finally, as was pointed out, the land on all four sides of this property is under the jurisdiction of the county. They're five and 10 acre plots. As I said, our property shares a 650-foot fence line with the property. Topographically, as pointed out, there's sort of symmetry. Well, there isn't symmetry. The mountain between I-90, that Highlands Estate, does not make our side of the highway anything like the other side of Highway 41. It is quiet back there. It is rural back there, and we'd like to keep it that way.
Your time is up, ma'am.
Okay. I just want to point out, I personally don't want a 35-foot-high building, apartment building, looking out on my backyard, our children. And we respectfully request that you deny this application. Thank you.
Next up, does wish to speak, Kelly Gwynn, is Dubey?
Thank you, Mayor, city council persons, and Shelley, as well as the other representatives here from the city. I don't think I can say much more that has already been said in opposition to this, but there's a couple of things that were stated so far that I think are fairly profound, specifically from the Department of Transportation. He stated three things that they considered in their studies as they go forward, and the number one thing that they talked about was safety. It was also mentioned by the representative as well, that while things are, can be bottlenecked, safety is still the number one thing. The second thing that the Department of Transportation mentioned is mobility. And the third thing, the third thing, which was at the bottom of the list, was economic development. I think that speaks volumes on the direction that we go in when we are developing. And by the way, I live in the Crimson King Estates as well. I joined Bob as the, one of the board members there for the association. Excuse me. There has been, there's been a couple of things that I would like to bring up that I'm not sure have been addressed yet, is that the State Route 41 corridor master plan states that without backstage roads in place, but yet with the widening of the road of that highway, there will still be an increase of over 600 vehicles per day in the area of Mullen, on top of what we already have. So I think that that needs to be considered as well. With all the, with no traffic signal on 12th Avenue, that's going to definitely force the traffic onto October Glory from that partial that could be, whether it's an R1, R2, or R3, we still have to look at the study of development of more vehicles and traffic going on to 12th Avenue and then on to south onto October Glory. Everybody from Highlands, from the, our residents, our development, as well as anything that could be developed onto that annexation property, would be going on to October Glory. Every morning at 7:30, there is a school bus that goes there at 7:30, and there is no pullout, there's no side road that the bus can go to, and there's children in our neighborhood, as well as into the trailer park next to us, that board that bus, and they have to cross the road. Whether there's a sidewalk or not, they still have to cross their road, and there's no safety mechanisms for that school bus. And that's every morning and every night as well. I think that, I'd like to say too, that I was the very first homeowner in the Crimson King Estate in early 2008. It wasn't an easy access as that lift station was not completed. They had to enhance it and complete it before we could get our certificate of occupancy from the then-mayor, Larkin. While I think it's very generous that this new development would, this new potential annexation of an R2 multifamily dwelling would contribute $39 per unit, I think the study has to be had if it can handle that much more. I also like to just mention that, oh, sorry about that. That this morning, there was an accident. I don't know if any of you saw it. There was an accident on that hairpin turn off of the interstate. And when that immediately happened, the traffic just backed completely way up and it was pretty far back. It's already congested, and I think cause, allowing for more development without further study from whether it's the Department of Transportation and the City of Post Falls collectively, I don't think that we're going to be successful in allowing continued development. Thank you very much.
Just for clarification, you said $39, and it's $3,900.
$3,900.
I figured you knew that, but just for clarification.
Thank you.
Next up is Bob Flowers.
Bob Flowers, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Well, I can't say a whole lot more than what these folks have stated tonight. I've been here in front of you many times, talking about the congestion on Highway 41. This project, since our city attorney says we have to give them a zoning designation to annex and mend, I believe should be tabled until two things happen. One, the 41 project is actually completed, and by what the gentleman from ITD, Idaho Transportation Department stated tonight, won't be until 2022. Because he said it would be a two-year project and not starting until 2020. And second, our R2 zoning hopefully changes with the new comprehensive plan and the new zoning designations that we're working on right now. Because R2 zoning is such a broad spectrum. It can be anywhere from five units per acre up to 15 units per acre. And right now, you can't drop that many more vehicles on that road. I saw the accident the lady was talking about this morning, and it had things backed up so far north and cleaned back to Seltice and everything, the light. It was a mess this morning. Everybody trying to get to work. I just believe that at this time and place, we should pass on this annexation until the highway is fixed, or at least in the process of being fixed. I just don't think it's the right time and place for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Next up, and Gary, I may butcher your last name, and I apologize. Gary? One more time? Idema, thank you. Thank you very much. And if you'd state that again for the record.
Gary Idema. Oh, man, I was sitting there. I'm a resident on Maverick Lane, kind of behind the proposed annexation. I was sitting here, man, I had all these great arguments going through my head, and what I was going to say getting up here. And I guess it boils down to, I'd like to ask the council to deny the annexation request, like Joe said, Linda. The whole attempt there is, you know, the carts ahead of, or the horses ahead of the cart, making money on it. I got it backwards, but the infrastructure's not in to handle that type of annexation request. It's outright dangerous on 41. They've already, the council's already, city council's already approved that apartment complex at the Goodwill. And there's no light there. So then, all of 41 right there is just really, you know, the traffic is really bad. I'd like to ask the council to just, you know, table the annexation request until the infrastructure is set in, working, and we can see, you know, we can see that it's going to be able to handle it. Instead of, obviously, someone's going to make a buck on it. The developers want to get that zoned in, boom, sold. And I don't think there's any hurry on it. Let's... So I would request that you vote no on that annexation request.
Thanks, sir.
This time. Thanks.
Next up, Ellen Marinco. Thank you.
My name's Ellen Marinco. I live at 48 or 50, 70 East St. Anthony's. I'm on the end of Maverick Lane where all these folks live. I just put in a brand-new house, new shop. If this property is annexed, all that traffic's going to come right down Maverick, hit 16th, and go down toward Goodwill. I have sat at that intersection for 20 minutes trying to get on and get across. I've seen multiple close calls. I've watched an ambulance and a fire truck sit there while people would not stop and let them pass. I don't think this should happen. It's bad enough. We got drag racers down 16th already. We don't see the police out there. We call, they don't come. So I'm against this, and so is my neighbors, Paula and Larry Ballard. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last one wishing to speak, Guy and Michelle Butterfield. I'm going to go out in a limb and say this is Guy coming up.[1438.26][1438.26](Laughter).
Guy Butterfield. Well, obviously, again, there's nothing much I can say because every, pretty much every point has been brought out as far as safety and the issue with traffic and so on and so forth, because I also reside in Crimson King Estates. And it's a wonderful area. It's quiet. You know, the, really, the only issue that we have right now, as far as different dwellings and stuff like that, is a little bit of vandalism, right? With our, with our fence line and stuff like that. We've had, you know, mailstole and things like that. And, you know, I, I used to have to live in apartment complex, multifamily areas, and one of the biggest reasons that we moved out was because of the safety issue and because of the things that happen in those type of dwellings. I've spoken with many, plenty of Corleone officers, Cooten County sheriffs, things like that. They're continually in those types of dwellings. I mean, single-family, awesome, but multifamily dwellings, I just, it's just not a good idea. It's just, it's not a good idea for, for where we're at, for where these guys are at, or anybody in the surrounding neighborhood, really. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So we had to testify with this point. It will be rebuttal.
Thank you, Sandy Young, again, for the record. I'd like to read in just a short paragraph which you have in your staff report, and it was written by engineering under the transportation section. So it's page eight of the planning commission staff report. "The existing roadway infrastructure in the vicinity of the subject annexation is sufficient to handle the proposed zoning, subject to the standard roadway improvements and extensions that would be required at the time of development or subdivision. Dedication of rights of way and easements would be better suited after development and construction plans for roadway extensions at the time of site development or subdivision." I have to say, I agree with Bob Foster who spoke. A traffic impact analysis needs to be done, but it needs to be done at the time of development. It can't be done in annexation because we don't know what's going to end up there. And certainly, engineering, as well as any of the hearing bodies, has the authority to ask that a traffic impact analysis be completed. And that, as you know, is pretty standard. It's standard in presentations that I do and projects that I represent. Just that this request is consistent with a future growth pattern that's been established by the city, the city's comp plan, the city's future land use map. The... I wouldn't be standing here tonight if we didn't look at that from every angle and see that what we're asking for tonight is annexation only, that again, the city will have the opportunity to look at whatever comes before them. We chose this zoning because we were asked to downzone it, so to speak, from an R3, and we were trying to mirror the pattern that we see out there, which is the R2 zoning on the west side, and now R2 and commercial zoning down that corridor. I know that Post Falls is committed to providing a variety of workforce housing, as well as just housing types. And so I feel that our request is in conformance with every rule, regulation, and policy that we could have examined, and I ask that you support it and that you approve it tonight. So that's all I have.
That'll close the public hearing. Counsel deliberation.
You're rubbing your hands here. I've got a long list of stuff here. Okay, I'll start.
Why don't you start?
I'll start. Thanks. Sandy, I appreciate that by the letter of the law, what you're asking for fits. But I'm not a letter-of-the-law-necessarily kind of guy. I'm more the common sense, what fits the area. And right now, we have a huge bottleneck, no fault of the landowner or yourself, at that Highway 41 Mullen light. And there's not anything that's immediately going to fix that. I would not feel, I just think the timing is wrong right now. I'm, I sat on planning and zoning for seven years, and I never voted for an annexation that was contingent at a corner. It's not something I think makes it contiguous to the city is because it's touching a quarter. I want, you know, if we're going to expand the city, let's expand it in a nice, universal way. So while that is, again, the letter of the law says we can do that, I, as Councilman Allen, will don't feel that way. I understand that the zoning as R1 doesn't pencil. It's not profitable. You said that yourself. We hear that quite often. I'm, along with some other council members... often. I'm, along with some other council members, not in agreement that that's our job. It's not our job to make the landowner's project pencil. If it's not profitable, then find something else. So from that standpoint, it doesn't matter to me that it doesn't pencil if it's R2. I would say if you can't make it pencil with R1, then come up with something else. Again, we're talking about the capacity of those roads around there. The other issue that comes up, and I, we hear this a lot when it comes to transportation, and we have a great engineering department, that when they give us the facts on whether or not the area roads can handle a certain level of transportation, you know, we trust them, and we know that. But that's built on a, that's, there's two different kinds of standards there. There's like the Seattle standard, and there's the Post Falls standard. And while that road may have the capacity to handle something similar to the traffic patterns in, say, Seattle, that doesn't necessarily mean that we want that in Post Falls. So I'm not going to argue whether or not the engineering department says that it can handle the capacity. I know it's going to create a problem. All these citizens are here already. They are the ones that come to that corner every day, and they know it's a problem. Whether it's a legitimate Seattle problem, whether waiting at a light 20 minutes should be something that we should get used to, isn't really the argument. The argument is whether we want to do that. I know personally, at the corner where I come out onto a busy street, I don't want to sit there for 20 minutes, whether or not the street can handle it or not. I would be in favor of declining this request for annexation.
Next up, Linda.
Well, I'd like to just say one thing about what John Manley said about the vacancy factor. So on one hand, in my world, I would be definitely in favor, because I know that we have a shortage of housing. However, in circumstances like this, where I believe that there is a safety issue at this point, until Highway 41 and the baggage roads are finished, to see if we can make this work safely, I would be against this annexation as well. And like I say, I know that we need, I know that we need the houses. I know we do. But at what cost? So until, I would say that when the Highway 41 corridor plan is finished, and they know what direction they're going, I would say I would be more apt to look at this in a different light. But at this point, right now, with that, a couple years down the road, I think that, I think the timing is off.
For the end.
I have to agree with Linda. The timing is off. It might be a really good project, and I would never say it's not, but when you think of a safety issue. I actually drove there yesterday down 41 and going, gee, am I glad I don't live here, because I probably would be sitting there for a half hour trying to get out onto 41. So I would have to say, until that corridor is finished, and maybe a couple of years, how long it takes, I would be against annexation as of right now.
Mr. Mahoy.
Kind of echoing the same thing. Future traffic patterns are kind of tough to predict. I mean, a lot of the stuff, especially on the west side of Highway 41, was approved by councils well over a decade ago and still being built out. So the full impact of all those is still yet to be seen. And I think we ought to probably wait to see what that full impact is, along with the changes to 41, pump the brakes a bit and see where we're at at that point. I don't know that anybody anticipated that traffic on 41 would be what it is today. I live on the east side of it, and I cringe every time I have to cross it. So for that reason, I think, you know, growth is good. Smart growth is better. Let's wait to see what happens when we build out everything that's already approved and reevaluate from there.
Thorson.
Well, it's just a couple of things here, and I have had this whole time this map of all your neighborhoods enlarged on my screen. And I am a proponent and a fan of infill, and I'm having the same problem that Council Wolf is. This is just kind of out there. And then the safety, you know, is the number-one concern, and I doubt that there's anyone in this room right now that has not endured Highway 41 in the last 48 hours. And it is, it is crazy. So timing, timing is everything, and safety is a number-one concern, I think, too. So I would say I would be inclined not to approve it.
All the way in before motion. And I'm going to go back to something Mr. Wolf said. In, Sandy, this is not directed at your plan at all. But we so often hear, "I can't develop it profitably at one zoning, so we need to get a higher density to make it pencil." And I've, I've been preaching, as my poor wife's heard this many times, it's not incumbent on the city to make a real estate investment, investors' investment profitable. It's what makes sense. You know, you want to work with them. You want to help them accomplish what they're trying to accomplish. But it's not our responsibility to make sure an investment is profitable. We don't want to throw obstacles. We don't want to be difficult. But that's, you know, that's, to me, a different, a different responsibility. So, you know, I agree. I think safety, the traffic is huge. I'm out further west, and if I have to go anywhere out north, I go out the side streets. I go out to Pole Line or Prairie and cut over. I will avoid Highway 41 at all costs. And so I appreciate what these folks are saying, and I understand, Sandy, that it's a difficult situation for your landowner. But, you know, if I would have had a vote tonight, I would have gone the same way as council, so.
One more short thing, too. It's six years I've been on the council. I don't recall any time that P&amp;Z has ever passed anything to us with no recommendation. Does anybody else remember that?
No, it was a 2-2 vote, because they had three members missing.
Right. But even then, a split vote. The council has gone against P&amp;Z in the past, and the results of that have been actually limits to commercial development in different areas and so forth. So P&amp;Z, this is what they do. They spend a lot of time on it, and if they've got some reservations about it, I think we really need to pay attention to that, too.
And I don't, I don't know if I recall in the recent past where an annexation has been denied. So it's kind of different.
I would make a motion.
Thank you.
I would move to, oh my gosh, I would, I would move to deny the request for annexation file number A-17-02.
Second.
Motion second for the discussion. Janet, please take the role.
Mahoy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. And folks that testified and sat out here, thank you very much for your decorum. Oftentimes, you get into these situations where it is a bit emotional, and you have something at stake. And oftentimes, the decorum is not what it should be. So I want to thank you all for the way you conducted yourselves tonight.
Thank you, council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's take five-minute, five-minute recess. Call the meeting back to order. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Tonight, we have none. Next item is citizens' issues, and this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. Bob shaking his head. We already heard from him. Thank you. Next item up is new business, Northern Plain Second Edition. Tavis.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Wilhelm, council members, Tavis Schmidt, Associate Planner with City of Post Falls. I'm presenting Northern Plain Second Edition, case file S-17-02. The applicant for this project is Lake City Engineering, and the owner is Sandra Runcorn. The requested action this evening is the city council is being asked to review the subdivision request and approve the proposed subdivision, along with appropriate conditions if necessary. The project is located along Chase Avenue, Chase Road, excuse me, north of Pole Line Avenue, right here, just a little bit north of Pole Line. It's at 2591 North Chase Road. It's approximately five and a quarter acres. Currently, there is one single-family house on the site. There's no significant topology or vegetation. Water is provided by the East Green Acres Irrigation District, and sewer would be provided by the City of Post Falls. This map shows the surrounding zoning. Primarily, the dark yellow is R1, single-family residential. We've got a couple little county pockets here. And then this, this project is SC3, with the subdivision directly to the north is also SC3, and then to the south is SC4, it's smart code zoning. The proposal is for 16 single-family residential lots, with an average lot size of 11,400 square feet. It works out to be a density of about three units per acre. They are proposing some new internal streets, which would be the continuation of Wheatland Avenue, and that would go right into Chase Road. This shows the subdivision, proposed subdivision layout. Chase is over here on the right side of the screen. We've got, the subdivision to the north has Wheatland Avenue coming down, and then it, so this subdivision will pick up Wheatland Avenue and come down, and then have a knuckle and go out to Chase Road. And at that point, it would be called Wheatland Loop, because it would go back onto itself there. Staff reviewed this for the comprehensive plan and found that it met the policies and goals of the Post Falls Comprehensive Plan. There are criteria within the Post Falls Municipal Code Title 17 in regards to reviewing subdivision proposals. The first one is regard to water, that there's adequate water supply, and regards to quantity and quality. East Green Acres Irrigation District's the utility provider for the domestic water. The second criteria is regarding this public sewage system, and that there's adequate supply. The Post Falls, City of Post Falls, has adequate capacity. The layout is adequate, and the existing home will connect to sewer at the time of development. The third criteria is that the proposed streets are consistent with the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. Roadway alignment and cross-sections are appropriate. There's going to be no direct access from any of the lots to Chase Road, and the layout accommodates connectivity there with Wheatland Loop. The fourth criteria is regarding natural soil and topography, and there's been no soil or topographical conditions identified on site as presenting any hazards. The fifth criteria is that the proposed subdivision is zoned appropriately, and it conforms to other requirements found within the municipal code. It is zoned SC3, which is a suburban smart code zoning. All of the lots meet or exceed the minimum lot dimensional standards, and it does meet the minimum density. There is one lot that it exceeds the maximum width, and that will be handled through an administrative variance request, and we'll talk about that in a minute here. The sixth criteria from the municipal code is that the developers made adequate plans to ensure that the community doesn't bear the costs of this subdivision, and that the cost of the subdivision is placed upon the development. And so annexation and impact fees will be paid upon building permit issuance. We received comments from Cooten Fire that they approve as presented, and just wanted to verify the street naming. And the Idaho Department of Land stated that there's no impacts to their projects. So I had mentioned that one of the lots exceeds the maximum lot dimensional standard. And so this is an additional condition that staff would recommend applying tonight if you would choose to approve this subdivision, and that it would just be that the applicant will apply for and receive approval for an administrative variance for Lot 4, Block 2, relating to the lot width exceeding the minimum of 120 feet.
Should be the maximum.
I was just going to say.
The smart code actually has, smart code zoning has a minimum and a maximum lot widths.
The point is, you have to exceed a minimum.
So the, well, the minimum would be, like, is 90, 24 feet? So, well, the minimum would be, like, is 90, 24 feet, and the maximum's 120?
If you read the wording of the slide you just had up.
Oh, did I?
Exceeding the maximum of 120 feet, correct?
You are correct.
Thank you.
I apologize. Sorry.
It was a trick to see if we were paying attention.
If we fall asleep.
So, where that is, is over here. It's the existing, the existing house is, will remain on this site. The driveway is going to be changed right now. The driveway goes to Chase Road. The driveway will be realigned to come down here to Wheatland Loop. And this dimensional standard from right here on the north side of Wheatland Loop to the north of the property, that is, currently is at 134 feet, and the maximum is 120 in this smart code zoning. And this can be handled administratively. So, do you have any more questions or comments for me?
Yeah.
Where's the closest park?
Closest park is going to be in Montrose.
So, they got across Pole Line? Kids got across Pole Line to get to that park?
Yes. They'll go down.
Trying to be consistent with the last time we had one.
Yeah. You remember the last issue, and there's supposedly a park on the east side that's more of a swale?
Yeah.
Well, there is a little park across Chase in the neighborhood.
Yeah, Rahide Ridge and Colt Lane.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not really a park, that's grass.
It was bigger than a swale.
Not much.
Bigger than a swale, there's no equipment there, you're right.
You know, and with this, there will be frontage improvements, because there's the trail along Chase that is kind of being piecemealed down. It's heading south there, and with future projects, it'll connect at Pole Line and Chase there.
I hate to put you on the spot here, Tavis, but do you know what the, what it calls for in terms of parks and green spaces? Is it a quarter-mile?
There is the quarter-mile, like, patchhead analysis things. And so, this was actually, there was a regulating plan when this was annexed, and it was this property and the property to the, two properties to the north that have previously been approved as subdivisions, and those were in the infill regulating plan as part of the smart code zoning.
See, because here's that.
Yeah, I know.
And it is close to the park in Montrose, that location is.
My only issue is that if you're a kid living in this neighborhood, you either got to take a chance crossing Chase to get to that swale park, whatever you want to call it, or you got to take your chances crossing Pole Line to get to Montrose Town Park.
Yeah.
You know, my, didn't stand up last time, it's probably not going to stand up today, but still my feeling.
At the south, southwest corner of Chase and Pole Line, there's Columbia Estates, was previously approved, and that is heading to construction, and they will be doing crosswalks and the trail along there. And so, with this, we're basically within, we're going to have a trail almost all the way down the west side of Chase.
So, there will be a crosswalk across Pole Line?
Till you get to my property.
Yeah. Yes, there will be. And engineering staff has actually looked at also potential roundabout at that intersection.
That's right. Okay. All right.
And there's sidewalk on the east side of.
Yes, sidewalk on the east side of Chase and on the east side of the intersection there.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to say, I like this a lot better than the property that council approved to the south of it. You know, I, but it brings up a question on smart code, and I'm going to throw it out. I know we're meeting Monday, so I want our legal counsel to be thinking about this. I would love to eliminate smart code, sooner rather than later. I'm just throwing it out for Monday's discussion. But this SC3, to me, is much more palatable than the SC4. And again, this is very similar to the, they call it Estates, it's not, but the one.
Columbia Estates.
Columbia Estates on the southwest part of that intersection, so they, they're very similar, so.
Yes.
Again, to me, this is much more palatable than. Clements? Need a motion, I would assume.
I would move to approve Northern Plain Second Edition File Number S-17-02 with the condition for an administrative variance on Lot 4, Block 2.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Thanks, Tavis. Next up is the ordinance dealing with Quad Park Court Zone Change.
Move to place the ordinance, Quad Park Zone Change File Number ZC-16-02 on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes.
An ordinance of the City of Post Falls Municipal Corporation of Idaho providing for change in zoning classification for the land described in Section 1 of this ordinance from 3.8 acres of limited commercial to community commercial services, providing for amendment of the official zoning map to reflect this change, providing that all prior zones applicable to lands described in Section 1 are hereby superseded, and providing an effective date.
Move to approve the ordinance, Quad Park Court Zone Change File Number ZC-16-02, and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye. Motion passes. Next up, administ, update on parking in the city center area.
Good evening, mayor and council. Over the last year, we've had complaints in the city center areas. We've added additional businesses about the parking, and down on First and Second and Third, there's a lot of area where we don't have sidewalk, we don't, we haven't installed curb and gutter, and those homes and residents down there were developed before we had those in place. So, what we have happening is parking, people, as they're parking along those areas, are pulling into people's yards, driving on sprinkler heads. We've had incidents where mailboxes have been hit as people are pulling out, because they're pulling too far off the road. And the right-of-way there is quite wide, but as you're pulling up, you don't want to park on the street, and as you pull over, they're just pulling too far over and getting into lawns. The police department and community development have been fielding calls. We dealt with some area along First Avenue where we installed no parking signs, but those signs are difficult to see when cars are parked there. And so, engineering and the Streets Department are working to improve the visibility of those signs, and possibly will paint the curb along that area also to help with that situation. But in the meantime, we have additional businesses looking to locate, and we have at least one business hoping to open in the spring on Spokane Street, and we'll have the site that we recently, or we're trying to acquire, we haven't acquired it yet, that we'll be doing an RFQ or auctioning off also, that we're hoping a business will locate. We have not been successful in acquiring a lot for public parking at this point. We hope to still get that in the future. But staff and I met last week, sorry, not last week, but the week before, and discussed possible options in that downtown area, and we do have rather wide right-of-way where we can come in and put in some angled parking. And is it 80 feet, Warren, I believe, down there? It's quite wide, and we will take in consideration and involve council with comments, because I've received comments back, like, on Fourth Avenue here and in Seventh, where some of those areas on the bowl belts maybe feel a little too tight, and we don't want to have people that are, we want you to feel like you can drive down the street correctly, or people can't back out if they're parked in there because of the traffic coming down the street. But we want to look at having the city center master plan updated. I have the old one from 2005 here, and it talks about the on-street parking and using that as a way to solve some of the parking issues for businesses down here. This was designed down here, and it does use smart code to allow businesses to locate with the intention of parking in a public parking lot or using on-street parking and then walking to the business. So, our parking requirements down in this area are not the same that you see in other parts of the city, where they would be required to have more parking stalls. So, you see people who are creating businesses that maybe only have a dozen parking stalls, and another area might require 20. And they're all great businesses, great owners. Everybody's trying to work well with us down here. The citizens have been great to deal with. I know, our Public Service Director actually went down last week and took his own screwdriver and stuff down, fixed one of the mailboxes, so that that was handled. Police Department's been working very well with both citizens again and with the owners that are down there. What we'd like to do is have council approve us to move forward with updating the city master plan, city center master plan, to look at what our parking needs are and how we could possibly solve that with some on-street parking. We'd also like council to approve staff to move forward with applying for a downtown revitalization grant through the Department of Commerce, and that's a community development block grant. That grant would be due on November 17th, and so, we would work on the master plan at the same time we're writing the grant. We do have a new individual just hired on staff who's written grants in the past, and Dave Fair and her supervisor, Tracy Stevenson, and I are meeting tomorrow to discuss whether or not she would be able to do the work on applying for the grant. We would need to use PAC or Panhandle Area Council for the administrative piece, because there's, Davis making wages and things, and requirements that have to be filed on a federal grant, and they're the experts in that, we are not. We haven't done that in staff in the past. So, those are the two items that we're requesting tonight.
Question? What would the grant be used for?
The grant would be used for the parking, and so, we would.
So, you can buy dirt with it?
You could buy dirt with it, you could pay for the asphalt, you could pay for the striping, you could pay for the actual master plan itself to update it. Those grants range anywhere up to $500,000, but I can tell you right now that 350 is the max I've seen in recent history on those grants. We have received grants in the past in this downtown area. Fourth Avenue, I think, received about $200,000 when Urban Rental did that several years ago. And then, there was a grant prior to my very long history here at the city, as I, as I heard earlier, that was done on Spokane Street. I don't know the amount, and we don't have staff here that knows how much that was, but when I talked to Dennis Porter at the Department of Commerce, he did mention that, you know, two grants have been received. I think with what we're trying to do, there's definitely the need, and they can see the revitalization that has happened with the help of those two grants and Urban Rental down here, so that's a benefit. Also, the Department, sorry, not the Department of Commerce, the Post Falls Chamber has put together a committee that's working on a downtown association, and those business owners have been meeting, this is going to be this week, they're going to be, I think, for their third or fourth time, and that helps us with this grant, because they see an effort of revitalization. Cootney County, sorry, one more thing. Cootney County has also, I've spoken with them, when they get their parking lot built next year, there would be opportunity for after-hours parking there, and they're supportive of that at this point. So, we could probably get a letter of support from them or an MOU.
So, what's the cost of writing the grant, essentially? Sounds like there's some subcontracting that's going to have to happen, and obviously dedicate the staff time. Do you have an estimate of that?
We don't have an estimate. We would move forward to getting a project scope for the cost of updating the city center master plan, bring that back here. If we write the grant in-house, there would be no cost for that.
There'd still be a cost, because the resource could be doing something else.
You're right. There, we can provide some staff hours and the number of hours we believe it would take us to write the grant.
And have we applied for one of these grants and not gotten it? And if so, how many of those have happened?
We have not a downtown community development block grant. The only grant that I'm aware of that we applied for was for an aerospace company, and they pulled out before the final decision was made. Actually, I think we would have been awarded the grant, but the company decided not to locate here.
So, we're basically batting $1,000 so far?
Yes.
We were actually scheduled, I think, a trip to.
To go down and speak, yes, and we had to call Tony and tell him we were not going to attend that hearing, because the company decided to stay where they were.
So, are you looking for a motion, Shelley?
Yes.
Wait, one second, please.
What's the boundaries of the city center that we're talking about?
I believe it runs from Spokane Street up to the freeway and down to First Avenue and over to Fourth Avenue, when that runs across there, but it's bound by Seltice, actually.
Do you have another question?
No, I was just going to say that I think Panhandle Area Council is a percentage, isn't it, of the total grant?
It is 10%, and that's for the grant administration, and the grant would pay for that.
Yeah, so then, that administration is, the city isn't paying for that.
So, it's.
It's coming right out of the grant.
It's only paid if we get it.
Right.
Right. Thank you, Carrie.
My pleasure.
Linda, motion?
Move to approve having staff go forward with the downtown transportation master plan, and what else did you want, Shelley?
Approval to move forward in looking at the downtown revitalization community development block grant.
So moved.
Yes.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Excuse me, roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. You know, it's great to see some of the things that are going down this part of town on Spokane Street, and parking's a huge issue, you know, it's something we've got to address as we continue to expand, so I think it's time well spent, so appreciate your efforts. Mayor comments, I forgot to do it earlier, but I would like to congratulate the Malloy's on adding a little girl to the brood and giving Ryan a little playmate, although you said that he's really not interested at this point.
You could care less that she's there.
But congratulations, and we're glad, glad Mom and Baby are doing good.
They're doing great. Thank you.
And we missed your last meeting, but it was good call on your part.
Appreciate that.
See, now we do need an executive session tonight.
Move to enter into executive session pursuant Idaho Code 74-2061C to acquire the interest in real property, which is not owned by a public agency. Further, that no action will be taken during the session, and the session will last approximately.
20 minutes.
20 minutes.
Do I hear 15?
Excuse me.
I have some new business to discuss.
Excuse me, let me finish this real quick, before I declare. We've got a motion to second, further discussion. All those, or, roll call, please, for executive.
Do we have a second?
We did, I think, did we?
Yeah, second.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Okay, before we enter, certain new business has to be on the agenda. If you've got a comment, it would come under council, under citizen comments?
Yes, I've been here the whole time, I didn't hear that.
You didn't hear me announce it?
No, I did not. I've been here since.
Can we?
We're in executive session at the moment, so you'd have to go back into public session.
I haven't. We took the vote, but I didn't declare.
Yeah, you can reopen public comment.
Okay, we're going to.
With a motion.
Is that all right with council?
I move that we reopen public comments.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor?
Citizen comments.
We'll reopen public comments, or we'll give you.
Five minutes.
Five minutes. Name for the record, please.
I've been sitting here, my hearing's not that great, maybe?
Problem.
I'm sorry, I apologize, but I've been here since six o'clock, and I just.
What's your name?
Name for the record.
Excuse me, my name's Bruce Mullin.
Okay.
I've been here, I said, you guys are kind of boring, to tell you the truth. I know that's how it goes, but.
This was an exciting night.
I'll keep this simple. My mentor, Frank Henderson, told me a couple things. Keep it simple and stupid, and treat people like they're, he taught me how to write, and address people like they're an eighth grade, have an eighth grade education, so that way they understand what you're saying. So, that's what I'm going to try to do. I have a problem with, I can't drink my water, because the DEQ, which I know you have no jurisdiction over, has, says I can't drink my water. And I live within city limits of Post Falls, and I've talked with Terry Werner back in the day, I've talked with Frank Henderson, I've talked to the, I've talked to everybody, back, Hammond, I've talked to every, senators, representatives, the lieutenant governor, I talked to the attorney general today, and they can't fix my water problem.
And. Who's your water provider?
I don't have one. See, that's the issue, because it's a private, I live in a trailer park, with Arendale Trailer Park out, but it is in the city limits, but it's a private property, and I've talked to the city before, I've talked to getting hooked up the city, but my landlord, who owns the property, will not pay to get it hooked up. I've talked to East Irrigation District, I've talked to McGuire Estates Irrigation District, nobody, but the landlords won't hook us up, because they don't want to pay the fees.
Rob, you have a comment?
Hey, you're on my time.
Robert Paulus, Assistant City Engineer. Just to update mayor and council, last week, Friday afternoon, there was a meeting held between Ross Connell, our department head for public services, John Beecham was in attendance of that, our environmental coordinator. In addition, was Dan Tweed, who is the owner of the Arendale Park, along with a representative, and I forget her name from DEQ to discuss the issue.
Susan Shite?
I don't remember the name, sorry. Also, Mr. Rob Tate, who represents Tate Engineering, was there to discuss about some potential routing. I was not in attendance of that meeting. I was not in attendance of that meeting, but I do know that it was held and some preliminary discussions as to what could be done for routing and whether or not we could get water to there. So staff is looking into it, and I can get more information to you shortly.
Could you then bring us, update us at a future council meeting?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Actually, I said, I've been here since clock, I actually found out that it was under discussion from somebody out.
Okay. So he'll get an update and bring it back to council?
And I said, but I've been dealing with this for nine years, and other residents of the trailer park have been dealing with it for 20 years. So I just wanted to be on record, bring it to attention of the city council that it's a big issue, because, you know, I realize it's privately owned trailer park, but it is in city limits, and like I said, I talked to Frank about it, and, you know.
Well, we got staff involved, so he'll update us and keep us posted and see if we can find a resolution for you.
And what is my, where can I go from here? I mean.
I would say we're going to get, if we can be, have an update at the next council meeting as to where we are?
Yes.
And then who would be the contact? Would it be, maybe Rob?
Yeah, if you give your contact information to Rob, we'll be in contact back with you.
Yeah, but see, what my problem is, I own my trailer, but I rent my space from.
Understand.
Yeah, so I'm not actually owning the property, so I can't do, I don't really have any standing.
But we'll still keep you on the loop so that you know what's going on, so.
And like I said, I talked to DEQ, and they tell me they can't really do anything because it's under investigation by the attorney general. And I call the attorney general, he says, well, we can't do anything because it's under.
Understand, it's, I understand where you're coming from. So we'll get, update and see what we can do and see if we can find a resolution for you.
And I'm more than willing to participate in more meetings or?
Good.
You know, deal with anybody.
If you give Rob your contact, we'll make sure we're in communication with you.
Thank you, mayor and council.
Thank you. With that, I will, will enter executive session.